And I'm calling the planning and zoning commission meeting February 1st, 2024 to order. May we begin with the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Fernando Cazares, Commissioner Mike Barron, Commissioner Manuel Rangel,
Here.
Chairman Johnny Narice,
Present.
Commissioner Yu Xinhuan,
Here.
Commissioner Regina Portillo,
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Salapas, Commissioner Alfonso Martinez, and Commissioner Hector Gue Garcia,
Here.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have quorum.
Thank you.
Motion to excuse those that are not here?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here's the duty, Johnny.
Get a full 360. Let's move on to the consider approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Eighteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Do we have any registered citizen comments?
No, sir, we don't at this time.
Going to move on to opening up the public hearing. Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance, item 6A. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the Cielo Laredo by rezoning lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 1015 Eastern Division, at a 7,320.03 square feet track of land along South Buena Vista Avenue between Palo Blanco Street and Tinaja Street, as further described in meets and bounds and attached exhibit A, located at 2720 South Espata Highway from B3 Community Business District to B4 Highway Commercial District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's something that's blocking. One second. Okay. There.
Well, there we go.
Wait there.
Is it done right?
There's something that's blocking the distance.
There's something that's blocking.
The distance of it. I can just speak in the body. But I can do it. Okay. What is it? Right there. Item 6A. For the record. Oh, applicant is Ramha Properties C. Owner, Miguel Gomez, applicant representative. Property description is lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 1015 Eastern Division, and 7,320.03 square feet of track of land along South Buena Vista Avenue between Palo Blanco Street and Tinaja Street, located at 2720 South Espata Highway. This motion change request is from a B3 to a B4. Proposed use is commercial, letter sent 12-14 against zero. Background, on January 24 of 2018, the city council approved a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol, the Taco Mice Ordinance 2018-014. On December 21st of 2023, the planning and zoning commission recommended to table the item time certain for the applicant to identify the, after the applicant to identify the proposed use for the B4 zoning. On January 4th, 2024, the planning and zoning commission failed to make quorum. On January 18th of 2024, the planning and zoning commission recommended to table the item time certain. In the interim staff met with the applicant to discuss the proposed use of the B4 zoning request. The proposed use of the B4 zoning request was identified to allow the sale of alcohol on both establishments, Taco Mice and Altessa Events. Location view, area view, street view, motion change signage, zoning overview, future land use. Staff recommendation, staff does not support proposed motion change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is the public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor or against this item?
Quick question for staff. This is under the district of Ricardo, and he just stepped in. Is he aware of everything for today's meeting?
Um, probably not.
Then I would say that table this till at least they review before coming back to us. Just give me the courtesy.
I second that, and also because there's no one here, a representative, to speak, as there's a recommendation not to support it.
So time certain?
Time certain.
So are you proposing the motion? I'm proposing that. And then your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to review and consideration of the following master plan. Item 7A, review and consideration of the revision. To the Palm Lake master plan, the intent is residential, commercial, multifamily. The purpose of this revision is to reconfigure phases.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is San Isidro Southwest. Engineer is Slay Engineering. Proposed use is residential, commercial, and multifamily. The zoning for this 822 lot development is R1A. Location view, area view, the proposed master plan, comments from planning, fire, traffic safety. I don't know what happened. That wasn't me.
Can you let them know we need to? Okay.
The proposed motion, the area view, location view, comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, parks and leisure, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. So engineer, record.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ramiro Ibarra. I work for Slay Engineering. I'm here representing my client, San Isidro, and we concur with the comments provided by the staff. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the engineer?
No, no.
Thank you.
Please.
Any questions for staff? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item 7B. At the record reflected, Commissioner Salapas is present.
I'm late.
Item 7, 7B. Review and consideration of the Cielo Vista subdivision master plan. The intent is for residential, multifamily, and commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Cielo Vista Laredo. Engineer is Slay Engineering Company. Proposed use is residential, multifamily, and commercial. The zoning for this 1,258 lot development is AG and R1. Location view, area view, the proposed master plan, comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, parks and leisure, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Second.
Again, Ramiro Ibarra from Slay, representing my client, San Isidro, manager. And we concur with all the comments except for, or not that we don't concur with the following comment, but just maybe some verification on comment number seven from Traffic. It just states right-of-way as per future thoroughfare plan and Viva Laredo. And I looked at the thoroughfare plan, and like always, it's just schematic. They just show a straight line connecting Donny Richard with Highway 83. And as you can see on our master plan, you know, we have a curve to it. So we believe this is, the way we are presented, it's a better location because we're tying into the River Hill intersection, which is a signal intersection. So we want to align it with that main street. And so if anything, that's the only comment that we don't agree with. If the commission will allow us to just tie in the way we have it, the way we're presented right now.
Is there an update from staff? Or?
So unfortunately, Traffic is not here. When we looked at the thoroughfare plan, he is following the right-of-way width as prescribed in the thoroughfare plan. Now, he did shift it up, but it does make sense because that's, he's able to tie into a signalized intersection. Otherwise, he'd be, it would create a big problem for Traffic having to go back loop around and get the residents in there. So, I mean, we understand the logic. Again, Traffic's not here. We didn't call it out on our end because we didn't see it as an issue, but.
So would we be okay to strike it? Because it doesn't say anything other than right-of-way.
Yeah, because he does comply with the right-of-way. We did look at that.
So we could, since it's already in compliance, we could strike that comment?
Unfortunately, Traffic's not here, so.
I think it's okay if we leave it in as well, because the right-of-way is.
It's already listed.
Because they do comply with the right-of-way. We did verify that. So.
So he's already in compliance with it, even though it's there. His plans are in compliance with it.
Right.
But your concern is that it's being stated as per future thoroughfare plan, and people are, is that what you're?
Oh, as you can see, Donny Richard, it's curved, right? And we're aligned itself, which is best place to connect it. The only thing on the thoroughfare plan, it shows just a straight line. Of course, it's very conceptual because nobody knows what's going on, and those lines extend forever. So it just shows a straight line. If the comment from Traffic is that I need to put that street as a straight line, then, well, we don't, we don't want to do that. It just doesn't flow as nice. This follows the contours, kind of hugs the future park that is going to be there. And most importantly, we're connecting, like Rafael mentioned, to the signal River Hill. So it just makes more sense.
Plus, he'd be building on a lake, so.
Quick question. Again, is the new council member aware of this one on the, in the area?
I, I, it's hard for me to hazard a guess if he's had a chance to look at this stuff. We haven't spoken with him about all this.
That's about any concern, you know, what they should have the right to.
And P&amp;Z is the ultimate authority when it comes to that, so.
I make a motion to approve subject to the following comments with a note on traffic seven that the master plan is in compliance with the right-of-way.
Okay.
Second.
So we have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I'm against.
One against.
Thank you.
Moving on now to consideration of the following preliminary plaids and preliminary replays. Item 8A, preliminary consideration of the replat of lots 1, 3, and 5, block 411, Eastern Division, until lots 1A and 5A, block 411, Eastern Division. The tent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is CJA. Properties and Roberto Ricardo Farias. Engineer is Jewright Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this two lot development is B3. Location view, area view, street view, the plat and the proposed replat, comments from planning, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. The engineer, applicant here.
Good afternoon. Alfonso Garcia would be to write in showing, I'm here for, you have any question about?
You concur to all the comments?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Are there any comments for the applicant? Any questions, I'm sorry? Staff? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to close the initiatives and recommend it.
Second.
So we have motion by Commissioner Garcia and a second by Commissioner Salapas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item 8B, preliminary consideration of the coves at Winfield, Cielo Drive, and Champions Way. A right-of-way dedication plat, the tent is for right-of-way dedication.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Killam Development, Engineer is Mesquite Engineering. Proposed use is for right-of-way dedication. The zoning for this development is R1. Location view, area view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
The staff members of the commission, Vitz Martínez, representative with Killam Development and Mesquite. We concur with the comments.
Okay. Are there any questions for the engineer? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
I'd like to make a motion to approve subject to comments.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 8C, preliminary consideration of the plat of Palm Lake subdivision phase two, the tent is residential.
Applicant is San Isidro Southwest, Engineer is Slay Engineering Company. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this 160 lot development is R1A. Location view, area view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, and.
Thank you.
Again, Ramiro Ibarra from Slay Engineering, and we concur with the comments for phase two. Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Motion to approve subject to the comments.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Like Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 8D, preliminary consideration of the plat of Cielo Vista subdivision phase one, the tent is residential.
For the record, applicant is Cielo Vista Laredo, Engineer is Slay Engineering Company. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this 129 lot development is R1. Location view, area view, proposed plat, comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Ramiro Ibarra from Slay Engineering, and we concur with all comments for Cielo Vista phase one.
Are there any questions for the engineer?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the staff recommendations.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salapas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, one against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 8E. Preliminary consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield, Phase 6C, and the granting of a variance to the maximum length of a dead-end street. Section 3-2J of subdivision ordinance, the tent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Killam Development, Engineer is Mesquite Engineering. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this 90 lot development is R1. Location view, area view, proposed plat, comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission staff. Vitz Martínez, representative of Killam Development and Mesquite. And we concur with all the comments from planning and fire. The one, the couple of comments that we would like to get stripped through from Traffic is regards to the residential lots fronting the major collector and removing the medians and the cul-de-sacs. Nowhere in the ordinance or anything have we read where we cannot front major collectors. And also, or the medians, we've dealt with that with another plat that we had through the one-stop shop process. So that's the reason that we'd like to remove that comment.
Which comment is that?
Uh, six. And as far as the other comments like block length and number three, and, well, that's the biggest one, number three. I think the reason, what we've spoken to them, and the reason they had the 300 feet was because on our master plan, the portions of these lots are actually portions of larger blocks on our master plan. They're just not shown on the plat. So that's the reason the length and everything is a little bit in question.
Can we have some clarification on that from staff? In regards to the number six?
Number six, unfortunately, Traffic is not here, so we can't speak to that.
Instinct discussions with them, they say that they feel there's going to be a lot of.
Because of the curbs?
Yeah, driveways along the major collector, but we haven't seen anything that says we cannot front a major collector.
But this is the first type of subdivision that has curved streets versus your?
Yes, it's along the lines of Victory Drive, which is south of it. And we do have fronting lots. And along with, along with like those, with these, we're going to have Hammerhead driveways. And that's what we're going to call it on the plat, require these, these lots fronting to have the Hammerhead driveways to allow for them to exit their lots without backing up.
Well, and I have a problem with Traffic just writing residential lots fronting a major collector.
Yeah, it's very open.
Is that stating a fact? Is that calling an action from the engineer? So, I mean, I don't know what Traffic wants from that. And you're, you're telling us they don't want that, but.
When, in our discussions, they brought up that they feel that would be an issue with access. But the ordinance is, nowhere does it say that we cannot front a major collector. Now, on the, on the technical, whenever the, with the, with details for a driveway, the spacing is minimum of 16 feet between lot lines for residential driveways. So we'll meet those requirements.
A question for staff. Haven't we had a similar conversation about this already for the coves? Where there was a similar issue with a major collector and the lots?
Um, yes, I think we have had that.
I think it was a different street, maybe?
It was Victory Drive. It was a previous plat that came up that we had about last year around this time.
And that's not shown in this, in, in these documents, right?
Yeah, not in these documents.
I know in the past, we've asked, you know, for, for somebody from Traffic to be present. I think it's very important, if Traffic has comments here, that somebody be present because we've all, you know, there never fails that we do have questions that they put here. And it's, it's very, it puts us in a very difficult situation to either remove something, keep something, and, and it's just not fair to the commission or the engineer or anybody here. So I think it's very important that somebody from, from Traffic is here to answer these questions because we can just only assume about from what we were reading here.
We continue to encourage their presence, and we'll pass along your comments.
Maybe we should do a letter or something that puts it in writing because everybody, we always say it and say it and say it, and they don't come, you know? So I think we should put something in writing that everybody should be here, like water, the.
Or if they have comments.
If they have comments, you know, utilities and all of these. We can't move forward or help or, or scratch off something that we don't know. And that's what I think.
Would it be possible for the commission to recommend this to city council? To say that we would like presence if comments are submitted?
We have done that.
To commit, well, you all would be in a better place to speak with your representatives, and they could place it as an agenda item on the council agenda. I'll do that, yeah.
It's definitely, you know, if I may.
Yes.
City council, it's really their territory. It's definitely maybe a management, operation type issue. You know, I think that's, that's a concern that could be expressed to, to management and have it addressed through them.
Could it be expressed officially through the commission, like through a letter?
Yeah, I think through a letter, and I guess of management, it would be directly towards the city manager.
Be addressed to the city manager.
Okay. Thank you.
They're running people off, maybe. They need to be here.
I'm sorry?
They need to be here.
I said, if they're running people off, maybe we should have, make sure the city manager appoints somebody from Traffic to be here.
Yeah.
What sort of action would commission like to take on this?
I personally would like to see the Victory Drive minutes so that we can compare.
Was it last meeting? No, it was two meetings, right?
It was some time ago, and I do know that, I mean, in defense of the engineer, I do know that they were coming up with some very, very creative, and I will stress the word creative, strategies to make those driveways work and make, I mean, the major concern was, was safety. And it, so the cars wouldn't be backing out directly to the roadway. What those actual outcomes were of that, I don't know. But I do know that we're getting very creative on finding some solutions there.
And that's why you came up with the Hammerhead driveways, right?
That's what we came up with.
That's what I meant the discussion was, because I was like, what, you know?
Yeah. And it's called out on the plat to, that the lots have to have the Hammerhead lot, so.
And I do believe that design was shared by the engineer at one of the prior commission meetings.
And I have an exhibit that shows kind of how they're going to look or how they're planned to look, if you want to see it or anything.
Pero colindan? Like, I know we approved that one, though. The Victory.
Yes.
We did approve that one.
Yeah.
I remember that one.
They've got a long.
Do they collide, or do you have like, can you show it?
Yeah, I have a plan of how it should be shown. Those plaits from Long Victory are already getting recorded, actually. They're in the process of getting recorded. Now, this is our master plan, and. These are the lots that you were talking about.
Where's Victory Lane or whatever?
Victory is, is here.
Okay. And which one, other one that we're talking about?
Champions Way is this one here. So it's all the lots fronting Champions Way is what we are plating along with interior of Phase 6.
Approximately, how many lots is that?
What's that?
How many lots is that approximately?
It's a total of 98 lots, but actually fronting is, I think, about 20 or 30 lots. Now, Long Victory is, this is how the layout of the lots, sort of, the driveways are going to be.
Could you zoom in a little bit more?
So all of this is Victory.
So. You tap here, right?
And then both.
And the two.
This is Champions Way, and that's the location of where we would have the.
We're here. You just. And the two.
Now, I mean, this, it's a major collector, or it's a collector, it's labeled a collector. And the vicinity of, you know, the school portion of it will probably end up being in the school zone. So the traffic will, will be kind of slow in the mornings, and that's when we expect the highest traffic.
Yeah. That's the new, that's the one that you want?
Yes.
To be scratched out, right?
Yes.
First staff, this is still the beginning of the one-stop-shop process, correct?
Right, from here.
So we can. Go through the one-stop-shop process. At the time of the building, they'll also have to issue approval to the location of the driveway. So it's going to be looked at multiple times.
So, well, I was coming from the other way around, as far as leaving it on there and then for you all to work it out there, and then.
If that's the case, we can, we can work it out that way?
I just, like I said, this, because we're the final say-so on plaits, and for us to take away something when we have no one here in front of us, it's just very difficult. I prefer to play it safe and keep the comment there, and then for you all to work it out there, and then hopefully have Traffic here next time. But that's sort of what, that's my comment.
I agree. I agree.
And for, what about comment seven? They say to remove the medians, but in another phase that we platted, and we've already gone through the one-stop-shop, they allowed us to have a raised median. And we provided all the turning radiuses and everything for the fire trucks to fire, and they approved it. We actually have an exhibit in the, in the packet that shows how the, you know, the distances of the width of the street to show that the fire will get around there, the fire truck will get through there.
And then we're going to introduce all that at the next meeting where you get the traffic? And again, we'll get to find part of it. So my recommendation is to close and go with the recommendation of city.
Second.
I'm sorry, so we have. Just, I'm sorry, one more thing. So in, in the way the agenda item is written and the request, you do have a request for a variance on the street lengths?
Yes.
That is something you would need to take action on as a commission as well. So that would strike out, I believe, it's comment number two from Plata.
Yeah, number two.
If you were to go that route.
Okay. Planning, okay with the variance, correct? Uh, that is your call.
No, entendido. I mean, the variance.
Comment number two.
The, the way, the way the item is written, they have officially requested a variance request. They submitted it and it's part of their backup. And it ties back to comment number two from planning.
Okay.
Which so choose to do so, but it is written that way for you to take action on. Or to grant them the variance would automatically strike it out. Did you get that?
Yes. Got it.
So who made the motion?
I did.
With the granting the variance?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. We have a second, Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item eight F preliminary consideration of the plat of the coves at Winfield phase eight and the granting of a variance to the maximum length of a dead end street, section three dash two J of the subdivision ordinance, the tent is residential.
There we go. Yes, applicant is Killam Development Engineers Mesquite Engineering, residential use, the zoning is for the zoning for this ninety-eight lot development is R one. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, fire, safety, and the proposed motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the committee. Uh, for the record, Rob Morales, representing Mesquite Engineering, Killam Development. Um, just as I mentioned before, um, we came here for, or how the item is written was for the variance. Uh, we were correct, respectfully requesting for that variance to be awarded. Um, and the comments are very similar, the other traffic comments, which we wanted to strike out are very similar to the item before. So if that's the case, I mean, we would like to request the variance and um at the moment of the one stop shop, we could address that with traffic.
Okay.
That's all. I don't know if you have any other questions.
Thank you. There's no questions or comments?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
These plaids are next to each other.
Yeah.
A motion to approve the variance and approve the item subject to comments.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight G preliminary consideration of the plat of Village South Retail, the tent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Michael Link, the engineer is Ken Dirksen. The proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one lot development is AG. Location view. Area view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. And proposed motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Engineer, applicant?
Uh, good evening. I'm Ken Dirks from the Dirks in Engineering and we've worked with Fernando on the plat and we agree with the comments.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions for the engineer or the applicant?
No.
Thank you. What's our action the commission like to take?
Motion to.
Well, go ahead.
Motion to approve subject to comments.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tranquill. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to consideration of following final plaids and final replats. If there's no objection by the commissioner staff, I'd like to hear items nine A, B, and C together.
Motion to hear items nine A, B, and C together.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner, Commissioner Salpas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now may I have a motion of action on those items nine A through nine C?
Motion of action.
Go, go, go.
Got it.
Motion, motion of action for items nine A, B, and C.
Is that approved? So we have motion by Commissioner Salpas. Second, Commissioner Tranquill. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. May we read those into record?
Yes, sir. For the record, um, final consideration of the plat of lot four A, block two, Alexander Commercial subdivision phase fifteen, approved. Final consideration of the plat of lot fourteen, block eight, Alexander Commercial subdivision phase fifteen, approved. But uh, final consideration of the plat of Santa Elena subdivision phase two, approved. For the record, those are the plaids.
Okay. Moving on now to consideration of model subdivision compliance. Um, if there's no objection, can we hear items ten A and ten B together?
Motion here, items ten A and ten B together. Second.
You have a motion and a second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now can I have a motion of action on items ten A and ten B?
Motion of actions for items ten A and B to approve.
You have a motion by Commissioner Salpas?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on now to item eleven, discussion impossible action. Um, discussion possible action, the change of time and venue of the regularly scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we, we did poll the members and it looks like we were able to secure the most favorable time being at twelve noon on uh, February fourteenth, so that'll be Wednesday, Valentine's Day at twelve noon. It will be in the council chambers. Um, so we're not quite sure if you need a vote, so we'd like to have one just in case.
Okay, now, did you, do you, is there a number of people that you got confirmation from?
Yes, we did. We got one, two, three, uh, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, and five.
Okay, because I will not be present and then, I will not be present. So just want to make sure none of us are on there.
Oh, we have, we had either time from you, Mr. Erwin.
Yeah, but I forgot that Valentine's. I own a flower shop. I would be busy.
Okay, so we have Rolando Casares, Mike Perron.
Yeah, the fifteenth is better.
What about the fifteenth at noon?
Because when we polled, well, the fifteenth is, we're having uh.
Youth parade.
The youth parade. That's why they do. That's why the afternoon is out and then.
Even twelve noon?
Yeah, everything's blocked.
Who's the problem at twelve?
It's a block thirty.
Sorry.
Pac won't be available at that time.
I'm sorry?
Pac was not going to be available.
Oh, they're not available. The whole day, they're not available.
What, what date? The fifteenth?
The fifteenth because of the youth parade. So if we would do it the fifteenth, we would have to do it uh, at the library in that little little conference room, right? I think that's where we can, we can film it ourselves.
I mean.
I don't think I'm going to, well, I for sure will not be available that week, that day. Which one, Friday, eighth that week, uh, that week.
At fifteen, that's.
I'll be available the fifteenth. I'll be, I'll be back, I'll be back in town.
So we're, we're seeing the fifteenth at twelve.
At the library.
At the library. Okay, let's get a.
At twelve, si, el viernes.
Yes.
It was yeah, that's interesting.
Thursday, Thursday. It's the fifteenth is Thursday.
Ah, fifteen is Thursday. Ah, okay, si, si, fifteen is Thursday.
Okay, so can we get a motion for that just to be on the table?
So can we have a motion to approve?
Motion for the next meeting to be February fifteenth at noon at the public library.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I abstain.
Oh, so one extension and you were. Bless you. Um, any direct comments or?
Yes, we had a, we left a flyer uh, in, at every one of your um, seats. And uh, city management is organizing a business, community, uh, town hall meeting for next Tuesday. We wanted to invite everyone at home and here, please pass it along to anybody that you think might want to attend. Um, it's going to be at the library at six o'clock next Tuesday evening. Um, so.
Can we at that meeting ask for somebody from traffic to attend this meeting?
To the city manager.
I, I think we should write a letter and, and give it to them.
Well, that, that'll be one of the things that can be discussed.
Put into this and everybody spends time, it's, they should be here because the majority of the questions to us is from traffic concerns. And there's never anybody here to answer those.
And we appreciate fire and parks and recreation always being.
Fire is always here.
Gold star.
Yeah.
And, and uh, just for very quickly, we did want to thank Ms. Wang for her service. We gratefully appreciate, you know, it, it is not a paid position. It is, uh, you know, a lot of work to be here and we thank her profusely.
I enjoyed it and I enjoy working with y'all.
Yeah, we really miss you. Thank you.
I think that's, that's all I have. Do you have any? No. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Ah, no. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries. We're adjourned.